Good morning. The meeting is now called to order. We're meeting in regular session in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl, Granbury, Texas. Would you all please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Pray with me if you would. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beneficial life-giving reines that you have provided for us. We ask that you give us some more as much needed. We ask that you be with his commissioners' court today. Give them the wisdom and the guidance to do what is best for the citizens of Hood County. We ask also that you be with our military throughout the world. Watch over them and bring them home safely to their families. For these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Y'all join me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me to pledge allegiance, Texas.
On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. This morning, do we have special presentations, Bob?
Yes. Here to celebrate anniversaries for four individuals. The first is Jason Frann, who's been with the county for five years. I don't know if he's not here. I'll give this to Donald. The next is our male clerk, Katrina Swanson. She's been here for five years. She's out working.
No, she's here.
No, she's here.
She's delivering to this building.
Yeah. The next is for Mary Burnett, who has been with the county for 20 years. Judge, would you come down?
Oh, sure.
Throw the podium.
Come on here. But not least, we have Steve Segler, who's been with the county for 30 years.
Wow, 30 years.
Well, this is hard.
Yeah.
He's glutton for punishment.
He's only 36.
There's few crimes you could commit where you'd stay in jail for 30 years.
You gotta say that.
I did a quick math on that. That didn't work.
Steve has worked under six sheriffs, but he says I'm his favorite.
Of course he did. Of course he did.
Because he's still got a retirement.
All right, does any citizen want to make any comments about any agenda items? If they do, would you please raise your hand? The sheriff has forms for you to fill out, so we can do that. Go ahead, Lynn, raise your hand. Anyone? All right, see you in nine. We'll move on. Consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Question, point of question for Stan. Do you want to talk about the financial report, or you want to wait till they come down to talk about it?
Oh, yes, sir.
So, it was a question on Friday whether he would have the paperwork, Judge. I'd like to pull that one off of, so Stan can talk about the financials.
Okay.
The audit report.
Okay, we have Commissioner Berry wants to pull the audit report off of the consent agenda. And does any commissioner wish to pull anything else off? Here in nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the audit report, which the county auditor will cover.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Is any further discussion on the consent agenda? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried.
Judge, Commissioners, I wish there was a brief way to go through this. And I'll be glad to stop anytime you want me to stop, or answer questions if you like. We did have our audit completed by Patello Brown and Hill, that's the county independent auditors. They issued one report, which is the management report you see bound separately. There were no criticisms in this particular report, but one thing they cautioned us about is the new change that has been made necessary by the Government Accounting Standards Board. They issued Statements Number 67 and 68. And these impose substantial new disclosure regarding pension funding. And the county is in good shape as far as the pension plan is concerned. And in the past, the county has not had to hire an independent actuary because there are no post-employment benefits offered to retirees other than the direct pension benefits itself. In other words, there's no health insurance provided to retirees at the cost of the county. But that's the only thing I would call to your attention in this separately bound report, is the substantial additional work that the county's going to have to do. Beginning October 1st, our policies and procedures are going to have to be fully in place to provide all of that information that is new this year. It has to be in place for the entire year, beginning October 1st through September 30th. So we'll be fleshing that out as we go along. Now, in the annual report, this arrived at the end of last week, and I just got it on your desk. You may have already been gone for the weekend. But I'm glad that it did come in. On page one, which is actually about 20 pages in from the inside, on page one you see the auditor's opinion. And that is a clean opinion. That is, there's no reservation, no qualifications, no exceptions taken in the opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that is allowed under accounting principles. The first 20 pages are comprised of my transmittal letter, an organization chart, table of contents. Now, if you look at page four, you see that is the beginning of management comments and discussion. That will help you get a big picture of the total financial position. It talks about assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures. It also gives you some graphs that you can look at and help get a bird's eye view, if you will. Then on page 16, some years ago, Government Accounting Standards in Statement Number 34 required governments to present a single-page balance sheet as if the county were accounting for its assets and liabilities and equity in a corporate form. That's not to say that can be legally or lawfully done, because you know, there are many, many funds in the county, and each one of them has separate ownership, each one of them has a separate set of laws. But with the failure of Orange County in California years ago, financial analysts decided they needed this different level of assurance. And so you have what you have here in front of you is a statement of net position. And this shows all of the aggregate assets of all funds across the county, all of the liabilities. The big difference between this and the balance sheet has to do with capital assets and long-term debt and depreciation. But we come down to a total net position at the bottom of the page of $55,597,000. The next page, page 17, is a statement of activities. And this walks from last year's statement of net position to this year's. And you can see that the change in net position was just over $792,000. So from a corporate reporting format, you see the county gained net position of $792,000 compared to last year. That is primarily the result of capital assets that were purchased and constructed. Then you look on page 18, this is the balance sheet. And this really is the hallmark of government accounting. You see that there's a separate balance sheet presented for each of the separate groups of major funds. This is a snapshot, a freeze frame in time of all the assets and liabilities and fund balance of each one of the governmental funds. You can scan through that, but on page 20, you'll see a reconciliation between the two accounting methods. And as I mentioned, the big difference between the statement of net position and the governmental balance sheet has to do with capital assets and long-term debt, because those are all factored into the corporate format. On page 21, this is more like a scorecard. This is a statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for all the governmental funds of the county. And you will see at the bottom of that, that the county, in its major funds, actually lost $400,000 to $500,000 of fund balance. So even though you gained in net position, the county lost fund balance in the operating funds, and that was primarily the result of the losses and the cleanup that ensued after the tornado that hit in May of 2013. We hope to recover a sizable portion of that loss through some grant funds that are pending. Then on page 23 is a reconciliation between the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance and the statement of activities. That's the corporate form. And you'll see there, one of the big differences is the allowance for depreciation expense that is not required in the governmental funds. And then there's another difference for the issuance of long-term debt. The governmental funds basically are reported on the basis of available resources for your support of your budget. And the Gadsby 34 statements are really to give the public a view of what the county would look like if everything was consolidated into a single fund. Page 25 begins the notes that add additional explanations. And I won't read those to you, but they're very helpful to understand if you have a particular question about a particular fund. Now, on page 83 and 84, that is the auditor's second opinion to the financial statements. And this one has to do with the county's management of grant funds. And you'll see that is also a clean opinion. That is, they do not express any reservations or qualifications. There are no questioned costs. However, a couple of pages farther on, page 87 and 88, I would point out to you that they did criticize the fact that the county delegated to our architect on the Emergency Operations Center the weekly review of the payroll of the construction contractor in Office of Management and Budget Circular A133, and also in the State Uniform Grant Management Circular. There's a requirement that the county comply with all of the compensation restrictions of the Davis-Bacon Act. And with any grant, that is a requirement. In the past, we had employed Grant Works to do that for us. They are a specialized grant management company, and that seemed to be all right. But in this case, for the Emergency Operations Center, the architect offered to review those weekly payrolls, and I accepted that offer. But our outside auditors disagree with that. They believe that it was not right for me to delegate that work to the architect. It was all done. There were no violations of the Davis-Bacon Act. Everything is properly documented. The architect did deliver those weekly payrolls to us at the end of the project. And there are no questioned costs. But the outside auditors did take exception to delegating that task to the architect. And so what we'll do in the future is make sure that someone here in the county offices collects those weekly payrolls, and we will review them and make sure there's no violation going forward. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the annual report, either now or at any time in the future. Yes?
Stan, just as a heads up generally, since I think two or three of the accounts, and I don't know which particular ones they might be, but there are several, are going to be affected by the implementation of Obamacare over the next two to three years. Can you give us any indication of where that's going to cost us additional money?
There's no way for me to quantify it right at the moment, Commissioner. There's a great deal of uncertainty about it. I know that the personnel director has scheduled a presentation from a benefit specialist from TAC in the very near future. That may give us a better handle on it. I'm led to believe the costs are going to be substantial. There are some alternatives that the county would have. They have to do with rearranging some of the benefit programs. If you want to think of a nuclear bomb option, you know, employers can't actually drop out of offering health insurance plan and pay a penalty. But those measures are very extreme, and I don't know, I don't know what the cost would be at the moment, so I don't know if those extreme measures would be justified.
Because right now, it looks like, in advancing it, that the fines are less than the cost of the insurance. So it makes one wonder what choices are going to be made.
That's possible, and I believe the federal administration is trying to push every employer to a single provider system. I think that was the clear intent of the Affordable Care Act.
Yeah, the point is, I think that the, well, the point to me is that we've been accustomed for quite some time to unfunded state mandates. We're now in the beginning portion of receiving federally unfunded mandates, because there are going to be records that have to be kept that we are not keeping now. As you discussed with me earlier, where there may be a way to divide that amongst several departments, rather than simply start adding personnel to your department. But there's going to be cost involved, a lot of cost involved, as far as record keeping. There's also going to be another area of audit opened up for those records. So I guess I will be absent from this in the future, but I would, I would say it would behoove the auditors department to keep this court very well informed of what you see coming.
We'll do our best. I would like for us all to keep an open mind and not, not make hard decisions until we have all the information.
Well, we can't. There's too much of this that is implemented during the coming three Januaries. And, you know, unless it is either rolled back or changed or something, so we really can't make those decisions until just before the time.
And there may be no one single silver bullet, as it were, that would be a remedy that would cure all. It may be a combination of techniques that we use, maybe some cost sharing.
I think there is a single remedy, but I'm not pleased to discuss it here.
Well, you know, that single payer option that you're talking about, we see how well that's working with the VA, don't we?
We do. That's my point.
That is not a political statement, it's just...
It's fact.
Fact.
Well, I believe that Personnel Director already has made arrangements to have a specialist come and talk to the court about this matter in particular.
I could also direct people to investigate and discuss the federal Indian healthcare system. If you want to see how well a single payer federal system works, or doesn't work.
You have anything else on the audit reports, Stan?
No, thank you, Your Honor. I would ask the court to accept this report so we could distribute it to our lenders and regulatory agencies and grantors.
Okay.
Recommendation for acceptance.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Rohn to accept the annual financial report from the auditor, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Does any commissioner have any other comments on this? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I see, Rob, you escaped this week. Very good. All right, moving on, there's nothing under items for business, for road division compliance and compliance. So Stan, you're back on again. Budget and finance, budget line item amendments?
Judges and Commissioners, there are no budget line amendments to present today. As far as the expenditures are concerned, we have provided you with the list of all the scheduled expenditures for your consideration. That list comes to $228,662.34. Among the larger items are Ben E. Keith Company, $11,711.05 for jail groceries, to E. Weth County, $10,755 for out-of-county inmates, to J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, $13,865.16. That represents various purchases by a number of county employees on county credit cards. Then to Somerville County, $30,894 for out-of-county inmates, and to Vulcan Construction, Vulcan Materials Company, $22,073.01 for road building materials. I provided a payment warrant for each item in the list. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but we would ask your approval to pay these bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion on payment bills? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, Stan.
Consider to take appropriate action regarding uncompensated care for intergovernmental transfers by Hood County. Commissioner, you want to talk about that, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay, this is, this has to do with the 1115 waiver, and we have, take a portion of the rents that they pay for the buildings out at the hospital that we still own, the MOBs, Medical Office Building, and put it into intergovernmental transfer and to the 1115 waiver program. So that's what this is all about.
To explain to any of the public that might have questioned, the 1115 waiver program was designed by the federal government as a method for replacing what used to be UCC or uncompensated care. The hospital does a lot of work for the public, for our prisoners, for other folks who don't have insurance, that becomes uncompensated care on their list. This is a way for them to recover a little bit larger share of that uncompensated care than they did under the UCC program. So the 1115 waiver is a transfer of funds to where we can take those funds, the IGT or intergovernmental transfer, transfer them to the federal bureaucracy, who then returns to us about $1.54 for every dollar we send up there. That's coming back through the hospital. All three projects that our hospital has identified as 1115 waiver projects have been approved by Regional Health Plan 10, which is what we are part of, which entails about nine counties. And so they have been approved, and we simply await the beginning of the flow of that money, which is beginning now. So that's basically what the program is.
Right now, there's about $48,000, well, not about, $148,154.50.
Yeah, which should come back at the tune of about $71,000.
Into the county for uncompensated care. Does anybody have any other questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the uncompensated care intergovernmental transfers by Hood County.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, I must consider County Attorney's update report on the forensic drug testing.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Last fall, the court, well, the Sheriff's Department and County Attorney's Office had a sizable gambling forfeiture around $25,000, and the court approved releasing half of that money to the Sheriff's Department for their drug enforcement investigations, and half of it to my office to try this forensic drug testing and alcohol testing program. Before we started this, we were having two basic problems with our DPS labs. One is that they were unable to test most of the K2 samples that we were getting on misdemeanor drug cases, because the chemists who create the K2 formulas keep tweaking the formulas so that they try to ride just underneath the threshold that DPS can test for. DPS has basically a basic testing program, and we were looking for a lab that could test deeper into the chemical formula so that we were able to get positive tests for K2 and be able to get convictions on those cases. The other problem is DPS is so backed up that it was taking nine months or more to get blood test results back, even longer if we had to test for both alcohol and drugs in a person's system. And we're getting a lot more cases that involve alcohol and drug combination, DWIs. And so we decided to try IF Labs, Integrated Forensic Lab, in Bedford, Texas, and use that half of that $25,000 to fund a drug testing program and alcohol testing program. So this is, three months into it, we've tested 29 samples, K2 and DWI, blood and drug evidence. We have pretty much equally split between Granbury Police Department and Hood County Sheriff's Office, almost exactly the same number. You can see from the second line that the County Attorney's Office has benefited most from this. We tested 24 samples. District Attorney has tested five felony DWI cases. Here is what is so remarkable. The shortest turnaround time that we've had on the blood and drug testing has been one day. From the time that IF Labs in Bedford picked up the samples from either the Granbury Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, to the time that we had the test results back, they email us the test results back. The maximum time they've taken is 16 days, and that was on a case where we had, I believe that was a K2 case, where they had to go so deep into the chemical formula to find that hook that allowed us to charge that as K2, that it took extra time. They actually had to analyze three different times to get it. But the average is remarkable, 2.9 days. Very often, I am getting the drug results back before I even get the case from the agency. And what this means is, in cases where people are unable to bond out of jail, for example, we had a number of DWIs this weekend that are still in jail, people that are still in jail with misdemeanors. And of course, you know, that costs the county money for every day they're in jail. We're able to get those cases filed and get those cases resolved much more quickly, because we're not sitting waiting for blood test results on most of these. It's not a cheap program. So far, it has cost $4,109 for three months of testing. We are asking for restitution in cases where defendants go on probation, and you can see, we've kind of got a measly amount so far. But again, this is only in three months' time. And if we... In, if we were using the DPS labs for all of this, we wouldn't even have filed the cases yet. So we've already got the cases back, and people are already paying restitution on some of those cases. We got another payment in last week from probation that's not reflected in this. You'll notice under the total due to the county attorney's office, 3733, that's the amount that we have asked for in restitution from the different defendants. That also represents two of the cases that we had between February and now, involved illegal aliens who had INS holds on them, and the cost of their testing for those two individuals is $376, which of course, we'll never see. But what that also represents is the fact that we got them out of jail, two people out of jail, in a matter of days, and off to INS. We got plea deals on them, got them off to jail, off to INS, probably saved at least twice that much in jail costs, or three times that much in jail costs. It's a little bit too early to tell how much we're going to end up getting in restitution. That's one of the reasons we're doing this as a pilot program, to see what the total cost is going to be, but I'm really encouraged at this point. We have not had one K2 test that's come back unable to test, whereas we were getting almost 90% of the unable to test from DPS. And of course, this doesn't reflect any of the arrests that are done by DPS themselves because they're required by their policies to send their evidence to their own labs. But I think it's very encouraging. I think if we were able to add more to this program, if we were able to add, for instance, methamphetamine testing for the DA's office, I think they would see a quicker turnaround in their cases as well. But for right now, we're going to just rock along the way we are, and, and I'm really happy with what we've come up with so far. We haven't had any problems. In fact, we haven't even had any cases that have required a lab tech to come down and testify. Everybody has pled, so, in my, in my cases. We haven't even had to go to trial on any of these. So that's good as well.
Ms. Castro, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess the county attorney has 24 cases and the DA has five. Is that because most of these are misdemeanor or first-time offenders on DWI or something?
Right. There were five felony DWI cases that were arrested either by the Granbury Police Department or the Hood County Sheriff's Department between February and now. The rest of them were all either DWI first or seconds, which would be my cases, or, like I said, those.
K2.
Those K2 cases. We've had quite a few of those. Some marijuana, some other illegal substances.
Lori, are the, you know, some of these DA cases, are they, are they catching this by testing through the, the adult probation or not?
Testing?
You know, when, when people are on probation, then they do drug testing on them, is, are they being caught like that, or?
No, 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 this is not that. This is from the arrest, from the original evidence.
It's on the arrest, okay.
Yes. From the arrest, so that we can prosecute, we can file and prosecute the cases. Generally, we don't file or prosecute either DA or county attorney unless we've got the, the blood and drug evidence back, so that we know that we're actually charging them with the right charge. So in the past, we've had to wait, and wait, and wait for the drug test to come back. Now, we've got a pile of drug tests, and we're waiting for the cases to come in because we've already got the tests back. So it's, it's really quite, it's a complete turnaround from what we had before.
Of course, my question, if the DA does this, you still can only see so many cases in the two courts, County Court Law and Judge Walton's Court.
Right.
Well, that's, I mean, are you, are you or Rob prepared to put in your budget more money for testing? Are you going to ask for more money for testing?
I don't think we're going to at this point, because what I'm counting, I'd like to run this for an entire year, so we get a really good picture of how much overall this is costing. If we decide to ask for money in the budget for this, I would assume that Granbury Police Department would pick up their own part of it, and we would only be picking up the Sheriff's Department part. But, you know, I don't know, it's too early to tell. But I thought that that was a good use of that forfeiture money that we had. As soon as we're able to sell the eight liners, I'm hoping to get the rest of that and put into it so that I can fund this for an entire year. Hopefully, I'll have enough money to do that.
Is the total cost on the testing, is that for all 29 tests, or just for the county attorney tests?
That's all 29 tests.
Okay. So, I mean, over a course of a year, it should just about wash out to where you're getting compensated. I mean, worst-case scenario, you're only down 800 bucks for three months. You know, that's less than $300 a month out of pocket.
Well, now, some of these people, if they, if they take a prison term sentence or a jail sentence, we're not, probably not going to get that money back at all. And that's another thing that we have to wait until we get more data, so we can figure out exactly how many of these, you know, we encourage people to go on probation if we can, and of course, DA probations could be up to 10 years. So it may be a while before we see how much of that money is going to come back in. My, my probations are fairly short.
K2 charges are increasing rapidly too, aren't they?
Yes, Commissioner, and they are constantly tweaking, the chemists overseas are constantly tweaking the formulas to try to avoid detection. And so we have to keep going deeper into the chemical analysis in order to establish it. But it's working. I mean, I haven't had any case, K2 cases that have gone to trial since February.
All please.
All please.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the forensic drug testing pilot programs report from the county attorney.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion carried.
Thanks, Lori.
Consider and take appropriate action regarding upcoming events at the Courthouse Square. Number one is Steve Dietrich's, the marketing and communications city of Granbury.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The item before you is pertaining to the Sounds of Summer Concert Series that's produced by the city. We're asking you to consider and approve closing one block of Bridge Street between Houston and Crockett, as well as the courthouse parking lot from the Houston Street entrance to the gazebo. From 3:00, 3:00 PM, well, the, the streets will be closed from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The parking lot closure would begin on Friday evening, and these would be for the following dates: Saturday, June 21st, Saturday, July 18th, Saturday, August 16th, Saturday, September the 20th. Again, this concert series is produced by NRG Event Productions for the city of Granbury, and it's anticipated to draw 500 attendees per week to the square, per month, I should say. There are, there are no financial considerations, so we are requesting your approval for these closures.
The, the, the square will be closed when? I mean, the inside of parking?
The parking would, would close off on Friday, Friday night through.
After 5:00?
After, yes, sir.
Okay.
Certainly, well after 5:00, until 9:00 PM on Saturday.
Except with the setting of the stage. I mean, workers have to, like, they did Friday, you have to get in there and set the stage during regular working hours. So I believe, it's not really fair to you, you weren't here last year, Steve, but they still, they set the stage in the same spot, just like they did this weekend for the Memorial Day. They have to set that stage.
That'll be true, yeah.
You know, and that, usually, they set it in the morning before anybody parks there.
Are you going to set it there or over by the gazebo?
It's, my understanding is that it'll sit on the northwest corner.
Where it was last year, right in front of the EDC building, strictly in front of First National Bank.
That'd work.
That's where it was last year.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Jim Hill, the Brazos River Corvette Club.
Again, I'm Jim Hill from the Brazos River Corvette Club, and we're asking your permission to have our Corvette show, our Ninth Annual Corvette Show, October 11th, using the square, or actually, the parking lot of the old courthouse. We've done this since 2006. We've only missed it two years while the parking lot was being refurbished, and I haven't heard any complaints. We try to keep our people very off the lawn as much as possible and keeping it as neat as possible, and we do clean up afterwards and move the barricades afterwards. The show is, we'll have over 100 Corvettes there, our cars and other people from all over this area, and they go as far as other states, too. We've had them from Oklahoma and, I'm not sure if you remember what's other states, but several other states, and a lot of people come from Dallas and Fort Worth. When we do have the show, we do raise money. All the proceeds go to a charity that is for, a charity that is in Granbury, and this year, it's going to be for Habitat for Humanity, and it will only go to the Granbury Habitat for Humanity. Several years, we've had other ones, we've had Salvation Army, and again, we specify it has to stay, the money has to stay in Granbury. I'm, am the car show director, and the show will be, we usually have cars starting to come in at 7:30 in the morning, and then we shut it down about 4:00. Used to be a little later, we're trying to get it earlier and earlier every year so the people aren't there as long and keep their attention. But we will be out of there by 4:30 on that Saturday. So, so I'm just asking for your permission for that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Brazos River Corvette Club to use the square on October the 11th, from 7:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon on October 11th.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action on the County Development District, Commissioner Precinct 3.
Okay, this is just the reappointment of Gene Cotham, Colin Crisp, and Pat Birdman to the Hood County Development District Number One Board of Directors for four-year terms as per Section 383.41 in Planning and Development, Texas Local Government Code, for the Hood County Development District Number One. I make a motion, we approve all three members to be reappointed to the board.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to approve the reappointment of Gene Cotham, Colin Crisp, and Pat Birdman to the Hood County Development Board Number One. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Aye opposed, the motion carried. Take appropriate action to appoint Steve Dietrich, the Communications Marketing Manager of the city of Granbury, as a voting member of the Hood County Development Board of Directors, Number One. Are you taking that one, too?
I make a motion that we approve Mr. Dietrich to the Board of Hood County Development District Number One.
Second.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to appoint Steve Dietrich, the Communications Marketing Director of the Hood County, city of Granbury, rather, as a voting member of the HCDD Number One Board of Directors. Any further discussion? Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. All right, now, next is consider, a report from the Fire Marshal regarding fire conditions in the county. Take appropriate action.
Judge, I think we ought to leave the Fire Marshal on year-round, because every time he's been coming, we have had rain, so.
Every time he's on, every time he's on the agenda, it rains.
That's what I was going to say, if it'll keep the rain coming, I'll come talk every week.
All right. I'll, I'll vote for that, I'll vote.
As of yesterday, our KPI average is down to 158, with a 14-day forecast of 266. Compared to the last Commissioners' Court two weeks ago, we were at 325 and 433, so we've had a significant drop from the rains we received recently. Right now, the Texas Forest Service is indicating on their daily fire danger map that we're in a low fire danger, which is a good thing. Currently, counties out to our west, E. Rath, Palapinto, and then Somerville to our south are under burn bans. I haven't heard from Parker and, or Johnson as far as our other neighbors. As of today, the National Weather Service is predicting approximately 20% chances of rain throughout this week, with high in the mid-80s, start, should start reaching in the 90s by next Monday, according to them. I figure our biggest problem right now is going to be on fire suppression, is going to be a heavier fuel load due to the vegetation growth that we're receiving from these rains. It's just something we're just going to have to keep a watch on.
All right, does anybody have any questions for the Fire Marshal? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept his report.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner Dever, to accept the Fire Marshal's report. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Right. Thanks, Ray.
Consider for approval, moving the accounting clerk to CS 6 Step 2. Treasurer, good morning.
90 days ago, I hired my newest employee, and I was told by personnel that I failed to mark the PAF 90-day increase, and I always do that, and it, my apology for failing to do that. I think we were right in the middle of the Tyler transition when all of that was taking place. This is not a budget increase by any means. I am merely requesting that the 90-day increase go into effect for her, moving her from a CS 6 Step 1 to a CS 6 Step 2.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this, moving the accounting clerk to CS 6 Step 2.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Aye opposed, the motion carried. Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the interlocal water well agreement with the city of Granbury, Precinct 1. Commissioner?
I had Lori look at this and got her blessings on it. It's an equal trade between two government entities. We're going to give the city two acres, they're going to split the cost of three-phase electric line out to the well site and to the animal control, which is approximately $28,000, and they're going to split half the cost of that with this. We'll install approach to the well site, the city will give us in return 20,000 gallons per month for 30 years.
Wow. You going to make that motion, Commissioner?
Also, they would give us free water and sewer tap hookups to the animal control. And I would like to make this motion for the court to approve this, if there's no questions.
A motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion on this? Sounds like a really good deal, James.
Both, both entities, it's very good.
Congratulations on working this out with the city.
That's not a, we're not giving them land, we're just giving them access to land, correct? We're giving.
We'll give them two acres easement to the well.
Okay, so we're not conveying land, okay.
All right, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Purchasing. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the contracts for the RFP 2014-0055 Fire Prevention Equipment, Fire Extinguishers and Services.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This RFP was issued in April and opened in a public place on May 12th at 2:00 PM. Bid requests were mailed to five different vendors. We advertised in the Hood County News and posted to the county website under bid opportunities. We only had one responded to the request for bid. You should have received a packet that showed what the new bid was from the gentleman. I know Tim and I had talked about this. The original person that owned the company we canceled the contract with had sold that company to someone else, and they were not keeping us in compliance with regulations. So we canceled that contract and have gone back out. The gentleman that did respond to the contract is the one we originally had and did a good job. Tim is very familiar with his work and, and didn't have any problem with it. I think Tim is here, if you have any questions of him and this contract. This morning, I had a question from Commissioner Dever about the old cost versus the new, so I sent y'all in an email form the old cost, and so you could look at him if you wanted to.
Everything's in order, though, correct? I mean, you posted it, and we had one response, and we canceled the other one with no problems on the cancellation.
I never heard anything from the gentleman.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve this. Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve this acceptance of this RFP for fire equipment, fire prevention equipment.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, the motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the standard AIA document, contract for the YMCA Recreation Center Construction Manager-at-Risk between WB Keebler and Hood County to allow the county judge to sign.
As the judge just noted, this is supposed to be a standard AIA document. Todd Baker, our project manager from the YMCA, is here and would like to say a few words.
So, this is, this is just the part one of the agreement, so there's really no money involved in this, if you recall. So, this is just the pre-construction phase of the contract, so if everybody's reviewed it, and you have any questions, I can answer those.
Lori, you have, you've, no questions, no problem?
And I brought three copies, too, so.
I have three, too.
Oh, well.
So, we have six now. All right, anybody have any questions for Todd?
There was a question that came up last week, Todd, and I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, but someone asked me about actually groundbreaking, do you have an idea? I mean, I know, someone asked that question, we've talked so much, do you have an idea on the actual groundbreaking roughly?
October is the date we're shooting for, and I can give you a more definitive date. Actually, tomorrow, we have the, if this is approved today, we have scheduled the first meeting between the architect and the construction manager tomorrow at eight-thirty A.M. So, that's, I have an agenda which I'll send out to you all, too.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion for approval on this first consideration.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout, to allow the county judge to sign the contract for the AIA document, for the YMCA manager-at-risk. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Convening to executive session under Government Code five-five-one dot oh-seven-one to consult with our county attorney regarding pending litigation, and this has to do with some AT&amp;T lawsuits on, for, drops. Is anybody, anyway, we're going over-
Does, you want to sign those contracts real quick?
Yeah, let Todd get out of here.
You don't have to wait around.
Todd, I'm going to sign them now, you can take.
Thanks, sir.
These are the real ones? What are these?
Those are phonies, these are colored.
The red ones actually came from the-
Yeah, the book.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown. What? Kathy says about you.
What the purpose is was, was to discuss about a lawsuit that had been filed against the county from AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T has dropped the lawsuit, and we were discussing the legalities of all of that, so there's no action to be taken, and we're adjourned. It is now ten twenty-five.